Order the November 19th, 2020, meeting of the Cold Spring zoning board of appeals. It's a workshop meeting tonight. We're going to approve some minutes. We've got one set from the 10:15 public hearing. And then we are going to have a workshop for 33 Market Street. There's an application for an interpretation and perhaps a variance, which is interesting. I've never had an interpretation in my time on the board. So first, I just want to announce again, I'm sure everybody knows that this is the end of my term this month on the zoning board and I've decided not to continue on the board. Eric has thankfully graciously agreed to serve as chair for some unknown period at this point. I don't know anything about any, any new members. So if you have questions about that, speak with Mayor Morandi or the village board. But it's been an interesting five years on the board and I'm, I was glad to serve the village and look forward to doing it again at some point. And it's been good to work with a variety of people on the board over, over the last years. So thanks, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thanks. So.
You're hired again.
Aaron, can I say a question about it? So if it's just the three of us, are we, do you know, is that sufficient for carrying at meetings? Maybe Eric knows.
My understanding is that three is the minimum number that the board can have to do anything. But I believe there are some cases where you would have to have the unanimous decision because it's not a full board. I'm not totally sure about that, but that would be worth checking into the village attorney on that.
I think both, both things are correct. Both three, four, four of them out of the five, there's supposed to be five. And that in this case, under these circumstances, it has to be, I believe, unanimous in most cases, if not all.
Okay, so in the next, next couple of weeks, I'm going to finish up some paperwork. And Eric, I'm going to try to turn over all of the Google docs archives to you. Maybe even set up a neutrally named email address so that you can then just pass that on to the next person. I still have things here that are owned by the last CBA chair. And I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to transfer those easily. So I'll see what I can do. And I'm, I'm always around if anybody has questions about, you know, anything that's happened over the last five years. I've got some memory and a lot of notes. Okay, so let's jump into the minutes from 10:15. Yeah, I emailed that to the board members, so you should have a copy. I just sent a new copy this evening to make sure it was at the top of your inbox. Does everybody have that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I found a number of things that I wanted to change here. So maybe I'll just go through mine first and then that would save some time for those of you who haven't had a chance to look at it yet. So in the chair, in the paragraph labeled public hearing, I wanted to specify that the application was not only for the B1 district, but part of it was also where their property borders and R1 district property. And the reason for that is I think the record needs to show that we'd be granted or reduced variance only for the B1 section of the fence. So I added where the property borders, the B1 district and R1 district. And then I corrected the, the owners' names. It's Eric Bieber, Nitsen, Katie Giari. And I made a couple of similar changes in the second bullet point in the first paragraph. I added at the end, and along a portion of R1. And then on two bullets down from that, I said, the fence would be four feet high on the east and north sides of the property. So I wanted to remove any confusion about what the remaining portions of the fence meant. And then on the first bullet point in the next paragraph, I added, the ZBA has a precedent for allowing six-foot fences where they border the B1 district.
But I, I think that, you know, each one of those are looked at to make sure that, I think that the applicant also has to show a nuisance that they're trying to eliminate of source. So it's, it's not particularly automatic, I don't think.
Okay, so, so I could add in when there is also a, a nuisance to the resident.
Yes, demonstrated nuisance, correct.
Does that work for, for you, Laura and Eric?
Yes.
I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'll step back from this.
But does, do you remember whether that applies to our, have you been on a six-foot fence application?
No.
Still have something to that.
Yeah, so it's, it's helpful for me to, to see this. I was kind of sad to miss the meeting for that reason.
You see, I mean, every one of these applications, they're always fact-specific. And in, in the fact that in general, you know, in the business district, you know, where nuisance is demonstrated and it's, you know, the six-foot fence has been warranted, you know, we've granted it.
Okay, so then on the, the second bullet point in that same paragraph, I removed this note that the ownership of the area behind, beyond the parking lot is unknown. I think that was an erroneous statement made by the applicant. But it's pretty clear based on the site plans, who owns the property there. So I changed that to village code only allows a four-foot fence between R1 properties. Or I guess in residential districts is the more correct way of saying that. And then in the motion paragraph on the next page, I said Jay Martin made a motion to grant a variance as reduced and shown on the marked up site plan with the variance ending at the R1 boundary. So again, trying, yeah, trying, trying to make clear that we reduced the variance to the R1.
In, in, in any of those areas to, to make it clear, you know, somebody just reading it to know where on the property, should we also, some, you know, in the, in these areas, write in just on the southerly border of the property? Or do you think that's, I mean, if, if that could be put in there so that when, when somebody's just reading this offhand, of course, they can always reference the documents and find that out. But if you feel that it's easy enough to put that in, unless, you know, everybody else feels it's unnecessary. I just think it makes it sort of clear.
Sure, I'll put that in the, in the initial paragraph.
That's fine, that's where I was thinking of putting it. So I didn't want to interrupt you, go ahead, keep going.
That's all, that's all that I have.
Yeah, I agree with all your points, Aaron. I really don't have anything else to really add.
It looks fine to me, everything else is fine.
Eric, I think that's first for you to ever say that. Congrats.
I think congrats to Mike also, thank you.
Yeah, congrats to Michael Mel.
Okay, so if one of you two who were there would like to make a motion and second this.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as amended pursuant to the changes you stated and the one small change I made and to adopt them as such.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those minutes are approved as amended. Our next item is the workshop for 33 Market Street. So we're, our, our goal here is to set a public hearing, which if we do that tonight, I will, I will get that going and, and Eric, I'll show you how, how all of that happens. So this is, this was before us a while ago, not the fence, but other things on this property. And now we've got a, a new application for a six-foot fence. And the building inspector has sent a referral for, for this fence in the B, this is the B1 district there, even though the fence is going to be between two homes. Is it P1 or is it I1? I think it's B1. Where's the plan here?
It's actually B1, Aaron. It was I1 some time ago, but the village board changed it to B1.
Okay, great. So the building inspector did not find a way to, to allow this to go ahead without a variance or an interpretation. And I thought that, that it was, I thought it was just a given. We've never had an application for a fence, some fence in the, in the B1 district. So the applicant has applied for an interpretation, which I have never done, but also it gets a public hearing, same as a variance would. And in an interpretation, we really are setting a precedent. Basically, we're kind of writing code for the issue at hand. If we should go ahead and say that a variance is or is not needed. And at the same meeting, I spoke with John First, the village attorney, about this. He said we could do both of these at the same meeting. And if we, if the board does not grant and interpret, does not make a favorable interpretation for the fence to occur without a variance, then we would go ahead and have a, a public hearing or continue the public hearing and address the variance itself. So that's kind of what our role or what your role will be at the, at the public hearing for this. I guess I would, at this point, ask the applicant just to kind of fill in any, any missing facts there. And also then we can, we can review the application to make sure it's ready for a public hearing. So I don't know if, if Anthony or Paul, whoever would like to go ahead.
Sure, I can, I can start and, good evening. My name's Anthony Morando, I'm an attorney with Cuddy and Fader. I'm here tonight on behalf of Richard and Natasha Crupp. I always love looking at these Zooms because sitting down in a suit is not the most flattering thing in the world. I, I appreciate your time this evening. As you mentioned, the application involves the property at 33 Market Street. This is the property down by the water, across from the train station, right at the intersection of, of Market. And as you mentioned, it is in the B1 district, as is the adjoining property. I can give you some background and at any point I'm getting too detailed, Mr. Chairman, please feel free to cut me off and tell me to shut up. The, the appeal here is of the code enforcement officers to September 30th decision. In that order, we were directed, they directed Mr. and Mrs. Crupp to seek a fence height variance from section 13417D1. That's the height variance section that applies to all residence districts. A little bit of background, the applicants filed a building permit this summer to install a section of six-foot tall fence along their northern property line. It's about a 50-foot stretch of an otherwise very long property line. I think the property line is almost about 650 feet. The, the fence is located behind the rear deck of an existing old guest house there. That was, the footprints remained, but it, but it was renovated. And I think that's part of the variance application that the chairman was referencing earlier. So the, the, I guess it was the prior code enforcement officer issued a decision in June directing Richard and Natasha to go to the historic board and not requiring any other approvals. So they went to the historic board this summer and in August, they obtained a certificate of appropriateness for the, for this proposed fence. After that, Paul's office followed up with the building department to have the building, the pending building permit issued. But instead, at that point, I think it took a few weeks and then received a, another decision from, I think it's a new code enforcement officer, which essentially sent them here. So apropos of what the chairman had said earlier, based on that initial decision and the, and our, our understanding that a variance was not required, we filed this appeal because that's the avenue we have to take to question whether or not the building inspector or the code enforcement officer was correct in that determination. And as the chairman mentioned, we're also asking in the event that the board agrees with the subsequent decision by the code enforcement officer, we're asking for a variance from that, that height fence limitation. I can go further, but that's essentially the background of why we're here.
That's, that's all clear to me. Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any, any questions about what we would be doing at a public hearing before we get into the, the application? To make sure it's set.
Aaron, if we, when we perform the interpretation, would that occur at the public hearing, not tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, John First says that, that our code requires a public hearing for interpretations. So that what those would be handled at the same night if both of them are necessary.
Will John First be on board or should we have him also, perhaps we speak with him on an attorney-client basis as to his insights or?
Well, I have not talked, he has not indicated he, that he thought he should be there and I did not ask him to, but you certainly could go ahead with that if you want. And maybe that's a good idea since this is a first interpretation in a long time. John, maybe you've done an interpretation with the ZBA in the past, but I don't know.
Yeah, but I just don't know if Eric or Laura are familiar with this information. And, you know, I, you know, I know in the past, you know, some things that we have done and that, I don't know if they want, you know, a, a legal opinion on it, rather than just my opinion.
I, I guess it makes sense to me because it is essentially, you know, writing the code for what will happen in the future for this as a much firmer precedent than, than a variance would be. So I think it probably makes sense for you to ask John to, to join and probably write the, the resolution as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, ask Eric and Laura what their feelings may be on this as well.
No, that, that sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, I think we are, we're going to be trying to derive meaning from the code that may not be black and white. And so we need, definitely, I feel like we need legal guidance on that.
Okay, so I guess that means two things for our, our work tonight. One is that we can tentatively schedule a public hearing. And then we need to check with John to make sure that he is also available on the same date that the rest of, that the three of you are.
Aaron, if I could add very quickly, there would more than likely be case law out there on this type of issue that John would look up and, you know, it offers some guidance because here it is, it's an interpretation of the code, so.
Okay. So that will be, if we schedule anything tonight, it will be, you know, tentative based on John's availability. And I think, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but the next meeting date is today. Next meeting date is only two weeks away, so we would need to clear this up by Monday, really, to get the notices taken care of.
I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman, is there, the notice, is there anything on our end that our office should handle or do we just follow up with the clerk or?
I will send, send instructions on, on how to take care of everything. And then you're, you're responsible for mailing the neighbors, basically, and picking up a sign from Village Hall and placing that on the property. And there's also an affidavit to sign, to sign that the sign was in place.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I just want to make sure I'm doing everything I'm supposed to do. Sometimes shared responsibilities can get confusing.
So I will spell that all out for you in an email.
Thank you.
Should we grant, you know, should we go ahead and schedule it tonight? So I looked through the, the application and for the most part, it all looks good to me. We've got the, the list of neighbors. There's a very detailed explanation of, of the point of view of the applicant. There's a lot of photography that is helpful. And we've got the environmental assessment form. The only thing that I would like to see also is maybe a, a survey that shows the surrounding properties in relationship to this one. There's a, you know, I've got the, the stamped historic board site plan, but I can't really tell from that much about the neighboring properties or what's across the street or behind. I know the river's behind it, but how far back that goes and so forth. So I would recommend that, that that be sent in and attached to the application.
Oh, Aaron, I have a question about that. We actually don't have access legally to adjacent property surveys. Right, so I mean, if it's, if it's an official survey, what we can do is we can, we can show you on the, on the zoning map or on the, on the Putnam County map for the parcels, which parcels are involved, but we actually don't and don't have access to surveys of those properties. In other words, the distance back from a house from a property line, all that stuff is proprietary.
Sure, so what I'm, that's not what I'm asking for. If I said that, I'd take it back. What I would like to see is a survey of this property so that we can see the neighboring properties line and the full extent of this property.
Yeah.
Instead of the shortened version of it.
And if, if that could include the dimensions, side yards and the, the proposed location of the new fence, I don't, I didn't see that in the document we received.
The, yeah, the only thing that I see for the, the fence is that stamped design plan or the cover from the HTRB. So we would want to see, you know, how far is the, what, what's the length of the fence? How far away is from, is it from the front of the property and the back of the property? It looks like it's right on the property line. So that's the kind of stuff that we need to see.
So we have on, in one of the documents of the historic board package, there's one that identifies the height and the distance from the fence to the deck and the property line in that location. But do you want to see it more all the way to the street, which is, I'm not sure that it's pretty far up front? I just want to make sure we know where, that we're providing with the correct information.
Which, which page is that?
If you go to page four of that, of, it's exhibit C, page four.
So that's the black and white one.
Yeah, I know, yeah, you gotta, I think you have to rotate your PDF if you're looking at it on.
So that's helpful, but we, we need to have, we need to have the full survey and have that marked on the survey. You know, for fences, we don't, fences are, were a little easier than for building construction. But it's, I think, hard for us to see exactly where it is in relationship to the neighbors and also for any members of the public who want to come and participate in the meeting and also for the record, so.
So, so just so I'm clear, because this is one of those things where, where the surveyor is not going to provide us with that, the, you know, Bady and Watson isn't going to put that fence on the survey. So is that, is it acceptable if we take Bady and Watson's survey and, and in the, and show on there where that fence is and the distance is back?
That has worked for us on other fences, yes. We don't want to cause a lot of design fees and printing fees for this.
Yeah, and we, we also, our, our most current survey is from quite some time ago because the owners have had no need to update that survey. So it will be on, on the survey from, I don't remember, 2016 or whatever, whatever the day, I don't remember what the date is offhand.
That sounds very, very recent to me.
The property lines will not have shifted, I can assure you of that.
No. So I think we could probably redline that to make it accurate and reflective of what, what's going on, right, Paul?
Yeah, that's right.
So under exhibit C, where there's a, a diagram of, is this what the fence would look like? With the black fencing sort of ribbed, but, you know, spaced apart, like the staggered pieces of fence? Is that accurate? I mean, I'm looking at exhibit C, or is this just an example from another property?
Yeah, it's an example, it's an example of an existing fence, but it's the same material. I don't think, Paul, there's separation, I don't think the fence has breaks. Am I correct, Paul?
There are horizontal breaks. So, so it is, the, the fencing is horizontal and there's space between the horizontal bands.
Okay, so it's going to look like this?
Yes.
But it, but it will be a solid line across. It won't be, the one that we're looking at, there's like pieces and there's, you know, five feet between the pieces.
Yeah, so I think.
It will be a single line.
This is a 50-foot stretch of that.
Yeah, okay.
This is the, this is the fence, the full fence drawn up.
And so it's going to be in staggered pieces, correct, Paul?
Because, because the contour, yes. So because the contour, the grade goes down so much, it's going to step down. Is, is that what you're, I'm just making sure I understand what you're, you're seeing.
I'm seeing gaps between the sections of fences here, but, so those gaps won't exist. There's, it's just going to be staggered to conform to the variations in height on the grade of land, correct? Is that what you're saying? If you look at your exhibit, you'll see what I'm saying. I'm, I'm looking at the drawing, I just want to be clear on what I'm saying. So are you saying there, there are horizontal gaps? Because there are no vertical gaps.
Page three, Paul, of the, of the historic board packet. It's got two photographs that show that the, there are three sections of fence that are offset.
Elevation, yes, there are no gaps between the fence and plan. It's just like, it's like the last page, it's a straight fence.
Okay, no, that's what we were just trying to clarify.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I was looking at the last page.
Yeah, just so we understand.
I don't have it as an exhibit, I just have it as a, so I don't have it numbered as exhibit ABC. I just have the, the plan.
Okay.
Sorry.
Bless you.
You know, I think I would sort of, think it'd be advisable for the board members to go down on their own and just take a look at everything to get a feel for what it might be like, you know, apart from just look, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of information here, but to be able to compare to what we've done in the past.
Yeah, and I think not to. Yeah, and I think not to get too deep into the substance of the variance request, but the, the really, you know, beneficial and promising thing about this particular fence is it's really not visible from anywhere the public would be. It's, it's really only between the two properties and it's screened pretty far back behind that structure and from the road. So it's actually pretty hard to see. That's why we, if you, if you look within these materials too, you'll see we highlighted it in red. Not that that's the color, of course, just so that you could actually see in terms of proximity where it will be located.
And, and referencing to that particular photo as you put in there with the red, where, where does the fence begin when you're looking at the sidewalk in the foreground here? Where, where's it begin as you look and then how far back? Does it start at that location?
It's actually, yeah, it's pretty far back. So if you, if you look at page one of that package, it, it's actually back at the deck. There's a little deck off the back of that existing building. So it's, it's between that deck and the property line. So it's, it's actually further back than that red even really indicates. But, and then it starts there and then goes for a stretch of about fifty feet.
Going west?
Yeah, going towards the water.
Right.
Yeah. So it doesn't start till behind the house.
Now, does that come up to near the, would that be the boathouse?
Hey, buddy, still on the meeting.
Would that come up to near the boathouse? I, I guess I'd have to look more in detail at this because we just sort of received the package while we were, I was at work.
The boathouse is two properties away, John.
Okay, thank you.
So this is John, John Tachek is right to the north of this. So, so this, this is actually looking at John, Tom Tachek's property.
Backyard, right?
His, his side yard essentially, right? This is actually his front yard. And, and then there's Al Zaglinski and then there's the boat club.
Okay.
And all of that is very steep landscape.
Yeah, and it's, it's that stretch of area along the property to the north there where the cars pull up the driveway and then turn and face, face against where this fence will be. So that's part of the purpose of it, to sort of break up that view and, of the cars facing against where the deck is.
My copy of the elevation is very degraded. I can't read the, what seems to be the, an indication of the distance between the fence and the property line. Can you just tell me what it is? It looks like eight, is it eight feet or? I can just make out the words property line and that's it.
Yeah, and I apologize for the quality of what you're looking at if you got it digitally because we had to shrink it down to fit the cold spring space, but we did send hard copies in and we could provide more if you need them. Paul, what's the distance?
That number is three.
Yeah.
Three inches.
Three inches, all right.
Three inches from the property line.
Any other questions about the, the application?
Just still looking things over for a minute more here.
Okay, that's fine.
So Aaron, are you gonna handle the notices or is Eric gonna do that or?
I'm, I'm gonna do that, I guess, or do it with Eric so that we can, I can show him how I've been doing it. And Eric, you and I probably need to put together and go over some stuff.
Is there a need to go over further, Aaron, who may need notice on any of this or has? I mean, I, I didn't cross compare the names to all the, the property owners.
So, so what we want to make sure is that anybody, any property owner who can see this property is on the list on this side of the river. So.
It, it just, but, but across the street, is that visible to, to any of the buildings across the street? I mean, because I don't know the, how forested the area might be and, and what the stretch of the fence until I go down there and look.
Well, I, I think that, you know, there are, there are.
I mean, if you can remember correctly, I mean, we, we basically went by, you know, if, if it was within somebody's, you know, sort of view shed to see this. Across the street or catty corner, we've almost, we've required notice.
I think we've got what, five, four or five houses across the street that should be on the list.
There you go.
Are those all on the list?
Uh, I have to double check with the addresses. I know that when we prepared the list, we, we prepared it to comply with the, with the requirement in the zoning code for public hearings. But if, if the standard is, can you see it? Well, the good thing is you probably can't from across the street.
It's, can you see the property really? Where is the application?
Because I, I haven't been down there to look, but it, it's typically been something that if, it's something that can be visualized sort of on plain sight, you know, by a particular property. They would just have to be noticed on it. But, but I haven't been down there, so I don't know what can be seen from those, you know, vantage points.
So just to interject briefly, that view, the, the photograph that has the red rectangle in it, the rhomboid in it, that is the only view you can see it from. So if you are on Market Street down where it starts to go down to the, to the train station, you cannot see this. You cannot see it from across the street because if you look at this structure on the, on the left-hand side of the photograph, that and the guest house can completely obscure any view of that fence.
Yep.
Not the same property, but that fence is not visible from almost any vantage point, but this one that this photograph is taken from.
Yeah, well, I was, I was thinking more and I understand that point clearly. I, I, I wouldn't imagine any of those houses could see it. So maybe I should have said not market, but the other side street that goes down to the boathouse. Can't see it. You cannot see.
That goes downhill there. I don't think.
Yeah, that, that's, that drops off right when you go over terrace, the terrace.
Okay. Ever stared into that area, so I don't know.
Well, I only have recently, so I can, I can agree with you.
So looking at the list, we have the four houses across Market are on the list. Then we have the chapel and then we have the neighbor to the, to the north. So I, I think that covers it from, from my perspective. I don't know who else we want to have. And we're gonna have the sign up so people would see it. I suggest when you place that sign, you put it on that corner of the property if possible so that they would be more likely to notice it as they're driving to their houses. What we want to avoid is somebody, you know, claiming to not have gotten notice throughout the hearing. That's what we're trying to do. John, are you still reviewing?
No, I, I'm, I'm good. I was just waiting for that last bit of discussion to finish up.
Okay. So I guess from, from my perspective at my last meeting, I'm fine with having a, a public hearing at our next meeting, which is the first one in December. That's December third. So if any, if you agree, I think we can schedule it with the possibility that it might have to be opened and then held open until, until John first is available. Just something else to keep in mind. So I'll let the three of you figure out if you can do that on the third and then somebody can make a motion and we'll schedule that.
Make a motion for what now exactly, Aaron? I missed, you, you were going in and out.
Sorry, um, so I'm looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing for the interpretation and perhaps also the variance for of two feet to the, you know, the residential fence law on December third.
Well, based on that language, I'll make a motion with that, as you just stated, to have the public hearing go forward on December third and for the of the zoning code with regards to the application.
And just to check the three of us, I'm available, Eric and John, we're both available then. And do we have, do we have anything else on the agenda that day already?
At this point, this will be your only.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I second the motion.
Okay, so everybody in favor of scheduling the public hearing as described?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So the next step, Anthony and Paul will be for me to work with Eric and send you instructions for the public hearing. I will do my best to get that out to you tomorrow and I'll also send an email to John right away, asking him for his availability. And the, basically you have some letters to mail out by Monday at the latest and instructions for getting the, the post office receipts for those.
Aaron, just a question. If our interpretation finds that a variance is required, all the groundwork has been laid to, to decide the variance at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Right, John, he did, John did send me a copy of a similar notice that would, that would handle both of these in the same meeting, or I guess you could even call it the same public hearing. I'd have to look at what he sent me again. So we'll, we'll figure that out. It will definitely happen at the same meeting. Any, anything else? I think we're all set. Any more questions from, from Anthony or Paul?
No, thank you so much for your time. We'll look for your email and we'll get right on the notice once we have the information.
Great. So that's it for tonight. We're, we're set to adjourn.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Eric. For taking up the reins.
So just to make it official if somebody would motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
All right, take care.
Stay safe.
Good night and goodbye, Chairman, and hello.